It's now 5:30. I now call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order of May 9, 2022. We're going to go ahead and skip the invocation and go straight to the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Griffiths will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just for all.
Thank you. And Member Four's roll call.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Zercher?
Here.
Under Five's approval of minutes, we have two minutes to consider this evening, the minutes from our regular session meeting of April 11, 2022. Has everyone reviewed the minutes from that meeting?
Yes.
Seeing that, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 11, 2022?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the April 11, 2022, regular session meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved to second. It all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have also our special meeting on April 25, 2022, which was for the second meeting for General Plan 2035. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. It all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Moving on to announcements. Any staff announcements?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to announce that we do have a new contract planner, Lawrence Tomacilo, and he is actually in the audience. And he'll be doing a lot of presentations, hopefully a lot of good work with the town. Again, he is a contract planner. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. I'll read my opening statement, and we'll move right in. Good evening. My name's Matt Zercher. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this, the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues, and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are surprising number of things the commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the commission are volunteers, and we are not paid employees. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I'll read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. And for purposes this year, this evening, we have four public hearing items. We're going to combine the public hearings, certain public hearing items with some action items, and we read those into the record. So, we will be combining zoning map change 22-001 and preliminary development plan 22-001. We'll also be combining general plan amendment 22-001 with zoning map change 22-003 and preliminary development plan 22-002. So, we'll hear all of those at the same time, and then make separate votes on those matters. So, moving right into it, we have item number one on public hearing items is zoning map change 22-001 upon the application of Silver Creek Residential PV LLC, a request for zoning map change, ZMC 22-001, from C1PAD Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services Planned Area Development to RSPAD Residential and Services Planned Area Development on the south four acres of APN 10312-707L located on the east side of Windsong Drive, approximately 800 feet south of Lake Shore Drive. We also read into the record the preliminary development plan, preliminary development plan 22-001 upon the application of Silver Creek PV LLC, request for preliminary development plan PDP for 116,665 square foot building, which will accommodate 120 senior living units on the south four acres of APN 103-12-707L located on the east side of Windsong Drive, approximately 800 feet south of Lake Shore Drive. Presenting this evening is Development Services Director Fernando Gonzalez. Fernando, take it away.
Thank you very much, Chair. Members, appreciate giving me the opportunity to bring this application before you, or these two, the ones of zoning map change and the PDP. Zoning map change is requested to go from a C1 zoning district to RS, C1 general sales and service, RS is residential services. The RS residential service is a transitional zoning, and it actually allows for specific residential uses. As you mentioned, this property is located on Windsong Drive, about 800 feet from Lake Shore, and as you can see above, it's the one with all the hash marks. It is about four acres. There was a traffic study that was conducted for this, and didn't seem like any improvements on Windsong will be affected by this project. The signalization and improvements along Lake Shore and Windsong actually will accommodate this. There was also a thousands-feet meeting that was conducted. There was three people in attendance, and there was no observation to this project. This is actually, the zoning is to accommodate a senior community living on four acres. It's 120 senior living units. The building is approximately 116,665 square feet, so it's a good-sized building. I have a rendition here that the applicant has brought. I don't know if you can see that. It's actually a U-turn. It's a pretty nice-looking building. The request does conform to our general plan, and actually, staff at this time would recommend that the council, or I apologize, the commission, consider approving the ZMC 2201 and PDP 22-001. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant is here as well, would answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll start with the commission. Any questions of staff for the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have one. I noticed in the renderings that we have no landscape plan to speak of, and I also noticed that the property line on the, the property line that is adjacent to the single-family residences, it states that it has a five-foot wall. Is, what are the, what's the wall made out of?
Oh, the applicant is actually here, and he may be able to answer that. Is that a block wall, or is that what, kind of a?
Wait, hold on, because, we'll, forgive me. We'll have that answered when the applicant comes up, just because I don't want him shouting from the audience. Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And like I said, I believe it is a block wall, and he'll confirm that as he comes up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have a comment that this use, in my opinion, is appropriate for the site, and it is sorely needed.
I think probably my only concern, you know, with this application, is that kind of looking at what's across the street, there's a, you know, senior living place across the street, but it has a road that goes completely around the building. And this one, of course, it has the parking lot, then, a little bit of a half-road, and then it doesn't connect with the parking lot from the back. And just, that, that's my only concern, to have basically better ingress egress for, you know, for emergency purposes and so forth. I realize we have the turning lane, I realize it meets fire code, but that would be, I would say, really my only concern. I do have another concern, and that is, I mean, it's minor, but you're, you know, it's a three-story building on Windsong, and we have nothing that currently faces Windsong that is three stories. And I imagine this would actually meet the town's height requirements, correct?
That is correct, at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. I do agree with my fellow commissioner, Ms. Rutherford, that this project is very badly needed in our area. I am concerned with the one egress for the fire access drive, and we can speak with the applicant about that further, but I'm not at all happy. It looks like it's 20 feet wide, but the applicant can answer that.
Right. It appears that there's, from the rendition that's up on the board, it looks like it's, there's an ingress and egress, and if it was a two-way, our town code requires 24 for a two-way traffic, but it looks like they have one for ingress, one for egress, and that minimum standard is 12 feet, but it appears that they've exceeded that expectation and gone to 20 feet for each side.
And just to clarify, that's the primary ingress egress?
That is the primary ingress and egress, correct.
Because it just looks like it says 20 here on the, on what I'm looking at.
For total, for both?
It's hard to see if it's 22 from, I agree with Arda, we need a magnifying glass.
So, I'm looking at, this is the, the parking area here. And you're right, I, even with the glasses, I would be able to see that.
It looks like it's just 20, and I'm not pleased with that. It needs to be wider.
And when the applicant steps up, we can, he can speak to that.
Then the two-way traffic circle, does that go out onto Windsong? Yes.
Yes.
I am also wanting to know about the TIA. Those documents are very important, and I'd like to see them in our packages. I understand that you've read them, you agree, you've supported it, but it's valuable information for us. Thank you.
No problem. Questions of the applicant?
We'll pick any other questions of staff from the commission? All right. Seeing none, we'll invite the applicant up. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Dennis Hoth, H-O-T-H.
All right.
I'm here representing Scott Nylund, the owner.
And Dennis, do you want to add and/or reiterate any points made by staff?
Yeah, one thing I would like to add is that ingress egress for senior housing is a little bit different than typical housing, in the fact that security is a big issue for us, so that's why we congregated all the parking on the south side there. It's also, the type of housing here is assisted and memory care, so they don't have vehicles generally. What we're trying to do is make it conducive for family members and folks to come and visit them. That's why the large ingress egress and circular area for drop-off, and then also the parking fields there for employees as well as family and friends. And it's very easy to get in the front, but we did not want to have more access to the backside, because we're just out of security reasons. And then, the other comment was about the fire lane, and, you know, obviously very cognizant about that, and went through a lot of engineering to put together the fire lane with the ability to back the fire trucks up, make a turnaround there, and get them back out. So, you know, we feel that, that that fire lane is definitely adequate to handle any issues there. And we do have a landscape plan, so I don't know if it was in the packet. Yeah, we, we've, not a full landscape plan, but it is very extensive, and I wish it was in this packet, because I think you'd really like it.
I mean, if it's, is it similar to what your rendering show on, you know, that we've just saw?
No, that's just a rendering.
Okay.
So, we actually do have a preliminary plan with landscape, and again, that's just the rendering, but we do have a plan, and I believe it was submitted, but it just didn't happen to get into our package, and obviously, we'd be glad to furnish that again. And it is a, the landscape and how the interior courtyard is put together is very important to us. It's important to seniors, it's important to families. There's a walk-around area, there's obviously several benches, place for people to sit and relax and so on, so the landscape part of it is, is very important.
Okay. And then, go ahead and answer the question that Commissioner Laney had.
Let me preface it with this. My concern is that that one side of the property is abutting single-family residences.
Yes.
And a five-foot wall, depending upon what it's made out of, is not really adequate.
I think, again, I think what we were doing is trying to comply with, you know, what the regulations are, they do require a wall, I believe it is five feet. You know, we could certainly raise that, if that was an issue, but...
Well, most subdivisions have, most, not all, but most have a six-foot block wall between the property.
That's very easy to accommodate.
That would be my preference.
Yeah. That'd be no problem. We can do that.
Yeah, and you're worried about the residents getting out, or, and I'm sure the neighbors are concerned about it, too.
Well, obviously, the residents that we're most concerned about, and legally have to, to take care of with security is memory care.
Of course.
And that's what is back behind there, and they're all secured areas for them to go out, enjoy the outdoors, but do it in a way that they're safe, and others are safe. So, you know, we're very cognizant of that, and purposely put the single level there, backing up to the neighbors, so that it'd be the least distraction for them.
Of course.
You know, we are working with APS now to take the telephone lines that are elevated there, and, and go ahead and put them in the ground, so we'll greatly enhance the views of the neighbors in the back. With that, we have to then approach all the neighbors and put together, you know, underground wiring to all of their homes. So, that's another aspect of it that we wanted to do, to, to make the visualization look better.
I also would like to compliment you on what you've done. Your, your presentation and your backup documentation is just excellent.
Thank you. Have to give, have to give a kudos where it's due, and that's, we have a great architectural team and engineers, and they did a wonderful job.
Well, you just, you gave us everything that we always need, and we don't always get it, so I want to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about where the deliveries will be made. Where will the trucks be parked?
Yeah, if we can get back to the site plan, I don't know if it's, there it is. So, deliveries are all up in the, obviously, the parking lot is on the south side, but you see the delivery area, and I don't, I don't think I have a pointer here, but it's right, it's right up by the garbage area, and there's, there's an area for truck deliveries, semi-deliveries, and so on. Yeah, that'd be, yeah, all loading is, is up there. Obviously, for small deliveries, they, they could do it in the front door if it needed to be, packages, Amazon, so on.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Hoth. A couple of questions. Did CAFMA see this plan, and they've put their seal of approval on it, our fire department, our jurisdiction?
Yes. We, you know, we met, obviously, through the pre-development stage here, had an extensive meeting with the city, went through all the various aspects, including fire, and that was a, you know, a big part of it, and wanted to make sure that this worked for them, and it did.
And I'm going to say again, I am concerned about the fire lane. The majority of our fire calls go to senior living centers, Med 3 calls every day. This road, 20 feet wide, cannot accommodate a fire apparatus and ambulances coming in. Are there any other suggestions or ideas that you have to maybe tighten this up a little bit?
And you're, you're talking about the south parking lot now.
You know, I don't have directional DNA in my...
Let me, let me piggyback off of...
The bottom, the bottom.
Let me piggyback off of what Commissioner Griffiths is saying, and I completely agree with her. So, the issue is that, and I, I look at this, and especially if there is a Med 3 call, and do you want, and here's another, again, it's a visual, okay, and I'm just looking at the optics, and I agree with Commissioner Griffiths, but yes, at the south side of the parking lot, getting an engine and an ambulance in the front side, right there at the, right, right at the beginning of the lobby there, it, again, is that a very good thing? That's why I would suggest, again, if you guys can, do a, do, you know, figure out a way to do a road around, and that way, you know, anything Med 3s can be on the side or the back, or anything like that. That's, and I think that would accommodate what we're wanting to do, and see if we can get a emergency route going around the building.
Yeah, and again, it's, it back to security, you know, not having too many entrances and exits, and unfortunately, you know, most senior housing, when emergencies occur, do occur out the front door, and it's just a matter of...
I just have a very big concern with the circle and getting emergency apparatus in and out of there.
Okay.
And especially that your front, you're bottlenecking that, and then it just seems too tight for emergency access.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll talk about that with our engineers, and see what can be done.
Is it at all possible, now that I know where the south side is at the bottom?
This is the south side.
I got it now. Up at the top, where you have your turnaround going in there, that little, can, can that go in a little further? Is that, why does it have to stop where it is?
Well, you, you might see a very slight outline of our interior courtyard, and again, that's a, that's a big deal to us, because, you know, we have folks facing in, and we're going to do extensive landscaping, walkways all throughout there, so if we were to bring the fire truck all the way in, it would destroy that aspect of it. And we think we do comply with all the fire safety distances for water and so forth, so I, we think we comply there, and, and that's kind of the way the building was configured.
Is there any reason why you can't bring the fire apparatus road down a little further that's on the back wall? It just stops abruptly right in the middle.
Well, there's a, there's a ditch that is actually located there, and so what we're doing is accommodating what we have here because of, we're doing, be doing a culvert. We've done an engineering study to culvert that portion that we're showing there, and that in itself is very extensive, costly, to do that. If we were to have to bring a fire lane all the way around the building, it would completely change everything. And, and it would become more difficult for us to accommodate as many parking stalls as we do, because then the fire lane would have to come through, accommodate all of that, and that's why we chose to go this direction.
One more comment, please. If you would, please go back to your engineers, share with them some of our concerns, and maybe there would be some sort of modification that we can do. You've heard some of our...
Right.
Challenges and our questions, and we're here to protect our senior citizens and your clients.
Right.
If you would, that would be fantastic.
No, we'd be more than happy to do that. I do understand your concern, and, you know, we'll look at all of that in that, how that functions in an emergency situation upfront.
That's more than I can ask, so thank you.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to suggest that the courtyard, as far as health of the residence is concerned, there's a balancing act there as to safety and overall health, and I think that courtyard concept that you have is absolutely essential and wonderful, and I commend you for the plan.
Thank you. And, and like I say, again, I wish it was up here, the landscaping plan and the courtyard, but it is, it was well thought out. We have a great landscape designer that helped us with this, and it's, it's kind of a figure-eight walkway, so to speak, with a lot of benches, trees, coverage, so you're not out in the heat, and so on and so forth. So, it, it is a big, big situation that we were very aware of.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you. You're almost done with me.
That's all right.
Now that you've mentioned that you have a fantastic landscape designer, please go back to your designer and ask that they really look at our native species here for Prescott Valley, totally different than from down in the valley, you know, our conditions with water and saving measures, so if they could really look at that, that would be super cool.
Yeah, they definitely, I know they already have looked at it, and I can't tell you the plant species or how they interacted there, but I'm pretty certain that they did take that into account, but we'll definitely go back and make sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the commission? All right.
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you, sir. This time, I'll open the floor to public comments. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the zoning map change or the preliminary development plan for this application? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comments, and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 22-001?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve zoning map change 2020-001.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
And of course, that does have conditions.
Correct. Of course.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 22-001 with the conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve PDP 22-001 with the reference stipulations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Item number two on public hearing items, which is General Plan Amendment 22-001, upon the application of Ash Dorn LLC, DBA Dorn Homes, a request for a general plan amendment from PAD 72 to low-density residential on approximately 122 acres located within the town of Prescott Valley boundaries on the northeast corner of State Route 89A and North Country Fair Trail immediately north of the Uppi County Fairgrounds and Arizona Downs Racetrack. We also have public hearing on number three, which is zoning map change 22-003, upon the application of Ash Dorn LLC, DBA Dorn Homes, a request for zoning map change from RCU 70 to R1LPAD Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, including density districts 5, 7, 10, and 35 on approximately 122 acres, located within the town of Prescott Valley boundaries at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and North Country Fair Trail, immediately north of the Uppi County Fairgrounds and Arizona Downs Racetrack. We also have preliminary development plan 22-002, upon the application of Ash Dorn LLC, DBA Dorn Homes, a request for preliminary development plan for a 326-lot single-family residential community on approximately 122 acres, located within the town of Prescott Valley boundaries at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and North Country Trail immediately north of the Uppi County Fairgrounds and Arizona Downs Racetrack. Fernando, take it away.
You need to rest now. Thank you, Chairperson, members. As the chair member said, this is a general plan amendment, zoning map change and a PDP. This is in order to accommodate 326 lots on four, on four different distinct density districts, or on 122 acres. The property is located on 89A across from Country Fair Trail, across from the fairgrounds, surrounded by residential areas. The general map amendment is a minor amendment. It currently identifies the property as rural residential, which actually is like a horse property, or a state... property, or a state residential, requires one-acre parcels. What we're asking for the amendment is to allow density residential to accommodate certain density districts, smaller, like a seven-density district, a 10, and a 35. Those mean like 7,000 square foot lots, 10,000 square foot lots, and 35,000 square foot lots. Those 35,000 square foot lots will be also one-acre lots, horse property as well. We're going, we're asking for that to go from RCU 70, residential conditional use, 70,000 square foot minimum, to the R1L, and against the density districts 7, 10, and 35. Dorn Homes, again, is proposing to put 326 lots on there. We did do a notification to homeowners within 1,000 feet of this project. There were 19 people that attended the meeting. None of them were opposed to the project, so there was no opposition to that. There was a traffic, traffic study that was conducted, and I apologize, it's not part, but it will be in the near future. It was reviewed by our traffic engineers, and it actually, there will be some modifications to ingress and egress on the property and circulation, as done as well. Again, these are the applications we're requesting for approval. Staff is recommending that the commission consider approving ZMC 22-001, ZMC 22-03, and PDP 22-02. Here's a rendition of actually the location of where it is, and here's the outline, and showing the different tiers, or the sizes of the lots, and what they accommodated. The ones that are not in color on the, actually my right, are the horse property, the one-acre parcels, and that is the zoning classification. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, real quick, before we get to commissioner questions, just for education, and to always take the time to educate us, and, yes, the, and the public.
Yes.
But why do we need to do a general plan amendment?
Because this is a, a minor general plan amendment, that actually is going to consist of 300, 300 and some odd lots, and this is just at the threshold. If it wasn't at that, we'd have to do a major amendment to the general plan, anything over and above that many lots.
And then, real quick, RCU 70, that is not one, that, and just for informational purposes, that's a placeholder designation that exists, because when the town incorporated, that basically came over from Upti County, and is a designation, basically, almost like a placeholder zoning setting, correct?
That is correct. At the time of annexation of the property, the county had a specific zoning district. When we took it over, we always tried to zone it something similar to what the county, and again, it was a placeholder specifically for something like a project like this moving forward, and then we talked about the change in the resoning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Vice Chair Rincon?
Mr. Gonzalez, the, in the, in the plan, and obviously, it's going to need the entrance and egress, the main entrance is down from the fair, further east than the fairgrounds' main entrance, and I noticed that there's just one other access out of the property, and that basically goes on the west side of the property, and kind of goes out into no man's land there, or land that isn't owned by this project. Are we requiring a second access onto 89A?
That is the emergency access that comes off. There is an easement that comes straight down off that property and onto 89A.
So that would, so that would come down basically right at the entrance to the fairgrounds?
That is correct, yes.
Is that a open access for people, or is it just?
It'll, it'll be gated at, at the development.
And just open for emergency?
Just open for emergency purposes, yes.
That was my question, thank you.
And that was a discussion we had with the fire department, and they actually approved that emergency access.
Because, if I'm not mistaken, the, the road that would lead from, basically right across from Country Trail, would have to be an all-weather surface, so it would be basically paved, basic, going up that.
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, you mentioned that there was a traffic impact analysis, and that there were modifications to the ingress and egress. Can you share with us what those modifications?
Well, those are going to be standards put in place by ADOT, or the, the State Department, because ADOT runs the right-of-way out there, and they will require ingress and egress from there, so those are standards that are going to be required by ADOT, not by the town.
So we don't know what those are yet?
We don't know, exactly. I, the applicant may have more information in regards to that, and he can speak to that, actually, he's here.
Okay. And then, one more question, the horse property.
Yes.
There are always concerns over horse properties when they're in other development How many horses? Where is all of that information? Will that be in CCNRs?
And again, that is a good question for the applicant. I am not 100% sure how they're going to govern that, but there may be stipulations in regards to the purchase of the property, but the applicant could better speak to that, in regards to-
That's out of our purview.
Well, no, you-
Well, it's within the town limits, so-
You can ask, you can ask the question.
Yeah, so if, with it being within the town limits, so how many, so on a, on a horse property, so how many horses would the town potentially allow?
Well, the town currently allows on one-acre parcels, two farm animals, so two horses, two pigs, two donkeys, things of that nature, but that's in, in the town, in the incorporated town of Prescott Valley at this time. So if they choose to be more restrictive, they can, but the town code right now allows two horses.
So then, I'm assuming these horses, will they have access and be able to go out onto state land?
Again, that's going, I, that's going to be a question, it's going to be hard to say. I, I don't know that there's going to be trails for the horses to go all the way out to 89A. I don't, I haven't seen horses out there lately. Before, when I moved here in 1986, or '87, there was horses out there, but since the town has grown a little bit since then, I haven't seen that many out there. You're welcome.
Any other questions of, from the commission, or staff?
Like I said, the applicant's here, be happy to answer.
Definitely invite him up.
Thanks.
And if you have multiple people, please bring them up with you.
Sure.
And then, that way, that way we can get any-
Yeah, of course.
Questions answered.
Of course. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Kyle Barcello with RVI Planning. Address is 120 Ash Avenue in Tempe, Arizona. I'm here on behalf of Dorn Homes, who has proposed this beautiful subdivision over here, and with me tonight is, is Duane Hahn, the VP of Land over there at Dorn. A couple of things that, that I just want to add to Fernando's presentation, to provide some clarity to some of the questions that were asked. On that far west edge of the property, that is full access, ingress, egress, so there will be two points, being the primary, you see that towards kind of the center of the site, and then further west, that's going to align with the Country Fair Trail Road, and at full improvement, once, once the, the property develops to the west, that'll be a maximum width of 60 feet, so there will be secure access on that west side, and safely built to the counties, or the town standards.
So let me stop you right there. You're saying that you, so you, is there plans then to develop that section to the west, then?
That's correct, and, and with that, there will be approximately 24 feet of pavement on, oh, not, not the property to the west, I'm sorry. The half, the half-street improvements, I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes. So continue, sorry.
Yeah, of course, and then, the only other thing that I'll comment on, as it relates to the TIA, so we are in the beginning stages, this is the, kind of the land use application portion of this, and there will be a preliminary plat that comes before you here in the future. There'll be more details provided at that preliminary plat, but some of the improvements that we're anticipating are mainly D cell lanes along 89A, left-turn lanes, that allows kind of the safe breakaway of traffic, to make sure that it's accommodating the traffic that's, that's going in and out of this subdivision.
Duane, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thanks, Chair, and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for hearing our application. We, a few things I wanted to add. Fernando mentioned the horse property. We, we actually aren't looking at those acre lots necessarily as horse property. That wasn't the intent, and I apologize for any miscommunication, but there's larger county lots, as you know, to the north and east of the, of the project, and we felt that it would make sense to put some buffer lots in there that were acre in size. There will be a separate gate, that, those will be gated, and that road into the acre lots will be a private road, and so that'll be a separate little subdivision, as parcel within the development, that we will, we don't intend to build those homes ourselves, we'll likely sell that to a custom home builder, or build the road and sell lots. So they may, if they choose to have horses on their property, that'll be up to what the standard town regulations are. We will have CCNRs over the whole project, that will have some limitations on what can be done, mostly because of water use, and our discussions with ADWR, and limited water use that's on, you know, the properties that we're doing. We are buying the town of Prescott Valley's affluent recharge credits to, to use water for this, so that we won't be pulling new water out of the ground, so there's a, there's a benefit there for, that's worth mentioning, and for that reason, we wanted to limit, you know, that people don't go and put an acre of turf out there, you know, in front, around their house, so that's, that's mostly where our CCNRs will be. And we are working with ADOT to improve 89A at both entry locations, as Kyle mentioned, and if you're familiar with Mingus West, and the widening being done, that was done with the first phase, and that we're doing now on the second phase, it'd be very much the same thing, so we'll have right and left turn, or left-turn lanes in, in and out of the project.
Do you find ADOT to be able to do that work for you in conjunction with your timetable as far as developing the project?
We're actually building the improvements in the ADOT right of way, so it's, and ADOT's no different than any other agency right now, who's struggling with staffing and all, they are, things are going slow, but we're, we're not, it's not holding us up at this point. And quite frankly, we only need those improvements to be in place when we're ready to open models, and have people start coming in and out of the site, so there's, we have time to get that done. It's worth noting that we're also going to be drilling a new well for the town as part of this project, and, and we actually are making the water tanks at Mingus West a little larger than, to account for the additional storage needed for this development.
Chair, a couple questions, sir. The gated access, ingress and egress on the west side? Yes. That's the east side?
Oh, oh, you mean down here? Yeah, okay.
What if we have an emergency? How do they go out that access?
Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, I'm sorry, there, I think there was a little confusion there. The only gate you'll, will be right at the trap, where you see a little traffic circle entering into the one-acre lots. That's the only place where there would be a gate.
So the other is open?
Yeah, there is no gates on the other two entries to the development.
Okay, because that's-
On the west side, it's full access.
Yeah.
It will not be gated.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and it's even, in reality, more than an emergency access point, it's a secondary point of access.
We, you know, we had heard differently, so I, I, that's-
And that's, you know, and in Fernando's defense, that has been a moving target that we've been working through over the-
Okay.
-over the months of, of working with staff in ADOT on the, on the issue, so.
So how wide are these roads?
Well, minimum 24 feet, which is, meets the town standard. And as Kyle mentioned, on the west side, there is an existing 60-foot county road easement that splits the property line, and we actually acquired their private easements, but we, we will be buying the easement on the west side of the property line also, so that we control both. So we will build our half-street improvements from the entry point that you see to the south, and then go over the center line as far as we need to, in order to have a full 24 feet of pavement. The entries into the subdivision at the middle is going to be, have a median in the middle. We, we really want to have a nice tree-lined entry into the project, and those will be a minimum of 20 feet of each lane.
I'll take 24, but I'd like 26.
So there'd be 40 feet of pavement total at the entry. And those, those are, exceed the requirements of the, of the fire department, as you know, fire district.
Thank you.
So, so I think the sticky widget in all this is that we really don't know everything that ADOT is going to be wanting of you, is that correct?
The good news is, we just went through this at Mingus West, the, the new phase of Mingus West that we're building, so we, it's pretty much exactly the same thing. In fact, we're even doing a separated entry there with a median in the middle, if you're familiar with that.
Yes.
So there's not a lot of unknowns. The, on the west side, as you all may know, is, already widens out for the left-turn lane from east to south, down into the track, Down County Road, so the, the width's almost all, already there, there's just some re-striping to do at that point, but we'll be widening the road at the middle part where the main entry will be, to add those left-turn lanes, that left-turn lane in.
Any other questions of the applicant from the commission? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I'll open the floor to public comments on the general plan amendment and zoning map change, and the preliminary development plan associated with this application. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment, and bring it back to the commission. Any other comments? Questions? All right. So, is there a motion to approve general plan amendment 22-001?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve GPA 22-001.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 22-002 with the conditions referenced?
I still move.
Chairman.
First, second? Is, are we good there?
First, second.
Okay. All right.
I still move.
All right.
I'm not going to repeat at all.
With, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rincon?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
So, real quick, before we get to the vote on the preliminary development plan, is there anyone that wants to see the final development plan before it goes to council?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I would.
I do.
Okay. With that, okay. So, hearing that, is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 22-002 with the reference conditions and the added condition that we see the final development plan before it goes to council?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary development plan PDP 22-002, with the stipulations in addition to bringing forward the final development plan to the commission before it goes to council.
If I may, I think what we'll do is, we really can't comment on the final development plan, but what we can do is, if we have corrections, we can table this and bring it back, if that's what you want to do, we can bring back the preliminary development plan.
You know, that's not a-
But it, that will be up to you. I mean, the changes that are going to be made are going to be made in regards to the application that goes to the final development plan.
And I think, I think ultimately, we just want to see what the final product will look like before it goes to council, and-
It's going to be, no, not at all.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that there's going to be much change.
Commissioner, and Chair and Commission, I want to make sure we're clear, the final div, what's happened, after this, this, these, these cases will go to council, and then we will come in with final plat and final development plan of each phase of the project, with final engineering plans and all those details. That would come in at a later date as we develop through the project. It's 326 lots, we won't build it all in one day. So I want to make sure we're clear, when you say come back with a final development plan before it goes to council, I don't think you're, were you implying before the zoning case goes to council?
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what we want to just clarify.
What I'm implying, what, what, what we'd like to see is, after everything goes through council, then it comes back to us one final time to see the final product before it goes to council.
The only other- The only other issue would come up is if we don't approve the preliminary development plan tonight, they cannot move forward to issue the, to get water rights because it's going to hold up your cause with the water, so we can't see the final development plan again until.
No, exactly, I mean, yeah, it's going to be a while, but yeah, I mean, I definitely think that, you know.
But we can definitely come back and see the PDP if that's what you choose to do. It's just going to.
But I think we just want to see the final product before we send it off to council.
Then you would table this.
I don't think we need to table it. I think we can, we've approved these in the past with the stipulation that we see the final development plan before it goes to council.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, please.
One last thing, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you know, like, there is the minor general plan, we have the ZMC, and then we have the PDP. But this project will also have a preliminary plat that will come to you as a part of that, so any really changes that would happen would potentially be at that preliminary plat before that final development plan, as I understand it, Fernando.
Yeah, the. It won't, it won't come before us until after zoning is approved, so. And that'll go to the council, the zoning actually will continue on to council.
So I think with the motions that we have currently on the table, we can move forward with that because it's the PDP with the stipulation that we see the final product back, you know, in the future before it goes to council. So we have a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right, and with that, we'll move on to zoning map change 22-002 on the application of Kimberly Wamboldt, agent requests to the town of Prescott Valley for a zoning map change, ZMC 22-002 from C1 Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services to RS Residential and Services on Prescott Valley Unit 2, lots 419 and 420 located at the northeast corner on Robert Road and Dana Drive. Fernando, take it away. I know we heard this at our last meeting, so.
That is correct, yes. So we've had this before us. At that time, we were requesting to do a five-plex there for the rezoning and we were going to join the lots, but we've gone away from that. We're going to just ask for the rezoning from C1 Commercial Neighborhood Services to RS Residential Services. The proposal now is to do duplexes on each lot. That way, it takes away the five-plex, the different parking situations, so the parking in each lot will actually conform to the town's standards at this time. So that's all we have before you, that's the change on this application. Again, we've talked about this before and be happy to answer any questions you would have. Actually, staff is recommending the approval of ZMC 22-002.
Fernando, I just want to clarify that in the RS zoning district, commercial and residential are allowed.
That is correct, yes. The RS zoning is a transitional zoning from the commercial and the residential.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Chairman, I have a question and probably a comment depending on the answer to the question, but it's my understanding that we are voting on zoning request change, but that that is not tied to this presented site plan, is that correct?
Oh, no, it is. It's both the lots, it's still the same two lots that we're requesting. So it's those two lots on the corner of Dana and Robert, the ones that are in hash.
And what I want to know is, if we approve this, are we also approving this particular site plan? Or are we simply changing the zoning?
We're just changing the zoning at this time, yes.
Okay, and my comment is that it would appear that what you are saying is that if this is developed as a duplex, the only way to access Robert Road is to back onto it.
Well, no, we will be taking a look at that. This is just a rendition of what we were doing before, but we will be talking to the applicant in regards to ingress and egress and not backing, or trying to alleviate the backing up into Robert Road. We understand that Robert Road is well-traveled and it was an issue before, so we'll, we're going to talk to the applicant at the further development stage to make sure that we alleviate that from happening.
Okay, that was my concern, that I didn't want to be approving what was bound to be an accident.
No, today all we're talking about is the zoning.
And then, real quick, I know parking at our last meeting was a concern. So we went from a five-plex to two duplexes, how does that change the parking situation?
Well, it alleviates some of the parking because now, instead of requiring the additional four parking spaces, we've reduced it by four. So it's going to be eight parking spaces for both units, so it's four per unit.
Okay.
That's, so it brings down considerably the parking requirement.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll invite the applicant back up. Kimberly Sonny, do you have anything to add?
No, you guys, well, I guess, the only things we really want to add is that we did completely change what we were trying to do with the five-plex, bringing them all together and what we decided to do would be best for everybody, would just keep the two lots separate, just build a normal duplex like we've always done in the past. These would look a lot like the other houses that we've built on Robert Road already. There's really nothing that would be changed from what we already build to what we're looking at now. We would like to be able to give more backyard space for the families because currently we sit at like 70 feet for backyard, so we would push that up a little bit to create that area. We are next to the park, so that gives them a lot of advantage as well, and we're not very far from the hospital, too. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a complete change from what we were doing. And I did give you guys a picture of what something looks like that's already finished that we've already done. That's on Greg, 3165 Greg. Those are also being built on 8503 Drive.
And I think you have one, do you have one being built on basically Spousen Hoffman? Is that yours, too?
Yeah, we're doing, the two-story model is going to be something that we go to a lot of because the lots have gotten so small, it doesn't give us the space we need to make them one level, and there's just not that much left, so we've gone to this two-story plan and it seems to go very well with people.
Any questions of the applicant of the commission?
I have a question.
Commissioner Laney?
I would like to have you address Commissioner Rutherford's concern. Are these cars going to be backing out onto Robert Road?
Potentially, yes. All the ones that we built on Robert Road before, 5880, 4700, all of those back up to Robert Road. They all touch the sidewalk and there are the same parking spots for those as well, those are according to.
Do you have enough room for them to be able to back up, pull over to the side and then come out front way?
There was a variance that we could have to give us a little bit less space for the backyard because the city's going to want a certain amount of space for the backyard. And I think that's 25 feet? If we, we do have some space because we're currently at seven, so we would add another 14 to push that forward to meet their requirement. That would give us some space to create some hammerheads there as well. And again, what we try to do when we're doing these is we try to pave the whole front section as much as possible so they have the added room to be able to move around in that property.
Is it possible, I'm looking at the site plan, and the one lot fronts also on Dana Drive, could one of them be positioned so it came, it came out onto Dana Drive?
That's something that I asked to have done before and that was one of the designs that we were asking for and we were told we were not allowed to do that.
So you could have one, the upper one, the northern lot, on Robert Road could come out onto Robert Road and you could fix it so they could back.
Yeah, like we would turn the whole house towards the, their driveway being Dana, but we were told that because of its corner lot and the addresses from Robert Road, we had to go that direction.
And real quick, I'll just ask Fernando a clarifying, clarification question. Correct me if I'm wrong, the reason they can't go out to Dana is because of how close it would be to the corner there of Dana and Robert, is that correct?
Right, that is correct, and that's the reason there is no drive, but we have a specific distance between the corner and people would be backing out and bottleneck unfortunately on Dana, and that's why we can't go out on Dana. One of the things that I was looking at while I was sitting there is, I don't know, you looked at possibly doing a hammerhead as you come in and park, instead of parking in the front, parking up and then backing that way, that way you would have them back out onto Robert Road. There's a design and we can, we can talk about moving something, I actually kind of drew something a little bit myself. So we'll take a look at that amongst ourselves and see if we can come up with those, like she said, the hammerheads. I think there may be a possibility of getting that done, but, so, but that would be up to the applicant.
Yeah, and that is something, too, that even on the 4880 Robert Road that we did, we put hammerheads on there, we weren't required to, but we just thought it was best for us to do that. So if we see that, we're going to, we're going to try to make that happen. And again, it doesn't cost us that much money to create the hammerheads, it really isn't, it's all pavers anyway, but if we can make it happen, we would definitely do it.
Okay. Commissioner Laney?
Would you explain to me what hammerhead means? I know it has something to do with maneuvering your car, but.
So what it allows you to do is, instead of, instead of backing up into the street, you back up at an angle and I paver this area and then you can pull forward and get into that traffic and actually see the traffic coming left and right, without you having to like turn your head and try to find it either way.
That's what I had in mind, I was hoping you could do.
Yeah, that's, it definitely, it's, we've done it on Magma and on houses on Magma, they just didn't work out, so we're just trying to make it easier for everybody and it's definitely not something that we're opposed to doing at all.
All right.
It looks better.
Any other questions of the applicant? I do want to, you know, state that I really do appreciate you coming back before the commission with this. I mean, I feel like you did listen to us and addressed a good portion of our concerns at the last meeting, and I just want to tell you how much appreciate, you know, you coming back before us this evening with this product. All right, thank you. Because it is a public hearing item, is there anybody wishing to address the commission on this? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment and we'll bring it back. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 22-002 with the following condition as referenced?
I'll make the motion to approve zoning map change 22-002 with the condition shown.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right, and moving on. Through all our action items, public hearing items. This time, item number nine is called to public. Consideration of discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result, a public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close call to public and we'll bring it back to item number 10 for our motion of adjournment for this evening's meeting. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned, thank you.